Yes.
Good afternoon, my lord. My lord, before I return to my submission, there was a point that my learned junior picked up on, just to make sure I answered one of your questions as fully as I should. One of the points, I think, my lord, asked was the status of RRR. And...
Ah, yes.
To make it clear, I think I answered the question to suggest it was a rolled-up hearing.
Yes.
And, as a result, it was permission to appeal and the substantive appeal heard.
Yes.
That was my understanding of the question, i.e. what was the Court of Appeal dealing with?
Yeah, no, what I wondered whether it was dealing with the application for permission to bring judicial review proceedings, and it wasn't. So I was going down a wrong track, but thank you.
No, I'm grateful, my lord. It was a point that we thought perhaps we needed to make sure we had answered fully.
Yeah, you did.
As long as the Court has the information.
Thank you.
I'm grateful. In which case, my lord, I return then to the point I was going on to make. Let's just look at the policy framework surrounding... Excuse me. The policy framework surrounding putative children. And this, to some extent, goes to the point the Court makes relating to how putative children should be treated before age assessments. To assist the Court, I make paragraph 23 of my skeleton argument, and it is the reference to S. and Croydon, Mr. Justice Lavender's case.
Yes.
My lord, if I may ask the Court to turn to the particular part of that judgment which I haven't asked it to consider, that is, page in the supplementary authorities bundle, page 102, paragraph 27.
Sorry, you're going to have to give it to me again.
Paragraph, page 102, my lord. I apologise, paragraph 28, not paragraph 27.
Thank you.
My lord, I start here because this is the guidance as it was then relating to how putative children, when they enter the United Kingdom, will be treated. If it assists, I say that is the guidance as it was then, you have in my skeleton...
Sorry, what's this statute? This is statutory guidance to whom and for what purpose?
So this is the care of unaccompanied migrant children and child victims of modern slavery guidance, my lord. It is the Department of Education statutory guidance directed at local authorities.
Yes.
And in this particular case, Mr. Justice Lavender was considering the extent to which a local authority must treat a putative child as a child before an age assessment takes place. My lord, to make the point more fully, you do have there the current incarnation of the guidance in my skeleton argument. It doesn't differ materially from that that was before Lavender J. And so I think I can return just to taking the Court to it, because the same principle is made out, i.e. where the age of a person is uncertain and there are reasons to believe that the person is a child, that person is presumed to be a child in order to receive immediate access to assistance, support and protection. My lord, that is the guidance as it was then and is to date to local authorities. If I may then ask the Court to turn to paragraph 37.
Yes.
Here, Mr. Justice Lavender makes the point that by agreeing to carry out an age assessment in the claimant's case, the defendant is effectively accepting the claimant as someone who may be a child. And note that will not be determined until the age assessment has been completed. Goes on to the bottom of the paragraph. Meanwhile, however, the claimant may be a child, and if he is in fact a child, that is a fact which, although it remains to be determined currently, exists. The consideration that the claimant might prove to be an adult would not excuse the defendant from its duties that it concurrently owes to him if he is in fact a child. So this is Mr. Justice Lavender's examination of the various facets of how the guidance should be applied, and making the point that actually if you are to apply the guidance properly until that decision is made, they must be treated as a child. It's not a case where the local authority can ignore the guidance until that decision is made, without good reason, I should say, of course. And then, to give the summary conclusion, you have at paragraph 60 of that judgment...
Right.
A very clear conclusion that it's unlawful for a defendant not to observe statutory guidance and to treat the claims of child pending determination of his age assessment. I say, my lord, that is the judgment of Mr. Justice Lavender, and that relies on the care of unaccompanied migrant children and child victims of modern slavery guidance. You'll see it in paragraph 24 of my skeleton argument. The Association of Directors of Children's Services Age Assessment Guidance. And I quote the relevant paragraph for the citizens of the Court. I would only refer to the same thing, but it is in the supplementary bundle at tab 10, page 35. My lord, I simply bring the Court's attention to this guidance, because it is also referenced in Lavender J.'s judgment in S. But it comes to the same point. It is pointing out that there are inherent dangers in children, putative children, not being treated as children. And indeed, as the guidance from the professionals involved in this sector notes, the dangers inherent in treating children as adults are in almost all cases far greater than the dangers of taking young adults into care.
That's a balance of convenience question only. And you don't go so far on your first point to say that because prior to making a decision the local authority must treat the putative child as a child means that interim relief must always be granted thereafter? You don't go that way.
No, I don't agree with that submission, my lord. The submission, my lord, is effectively, it goes to the Court's point on, well, what about the circular question? And it comes back to the point I was making to my lady earlier in proceedings when I referring to Ofsted in paragraph 62. And that is that when the Court is considering interim relief, I say this judgment and this guidance is relevant, because what the Court is doing is being asked to grant interim relief is effectively almost extending the requirements of that guidance. So it is asking, it is requiring the local authority to continue to adopt that protective precautionary approach.
The status quo point.
The status quo point, my lord, yes. And if I may, there is an additional authority, it's one of my learned friend's authorities, that I think assists with this point as well. And if I ask the Court to turn to the case of K.A. in Croydon, and that is page 221 of the authorities bundle, paragraph 48.
supplementary or...
It is the main authorities bundle.
Yes.
I'm just catching up, my lord, I apologise. Yes, my lord, so it's paragraph 48 where we speak to the... Well, paragraph 47 may well actually be assistance as well. That is effectively, Mrs. Justice Lang, as she was then, putting the point to the local authorities' counsel that actually mandatory interim relief orders, if applied, in the DeFalco sense, would effectively stop these kind of orders being granted. And the response in reply was effectively from counsel that no local authority I represent would ever make such a submission, it would be laughed at. The important point, I think, thereafter goes into paragraph 48, which goes to status quo. And in Mrs. Justice Lang's judgment, she states that there's, in the absence of an explained or unexcusable delay in applying for interim relief, in, if not all cases, the status quo ante in a case like this would be status quo ante the impugned decision, not the status quo ante the application for interim relief. So, my lord, I say that is relevant, because that means that you are certainly then applying the American cyanomyte test, because you are not requiring the local authority to do anything other than continue the status quo before its decision was made.
Well, sorry, that doesn't slightly evade the question, because if the local authority is not providing, has never provided services, then is that status quo? They've never provided services? So how does that help with the balancing exercise?
I see the differentiation. There's, of course, a difference between a local authority which has already provided services being required to provide further services, and one that is not and would then be required to provide services. But there is a conceptual difference between the two. My submission is that actually the interim relief point comes before that, because these are inevitable flows from the decision on interim relief. The intention on interim relief is to continue to treat the putative child as the age that he says he is, i.e. continue to treat him as a putative child, and therefore you continue to apply the guidance, and that putative child then must continue to be treated as putative child until the final decision to be made by the Court is made. That is obviously a matter of interim relief. The Court could say in any particular case, I decline to do that. But in this, but the submission that I essentially make is that, the Court just jumps ahead by saying you differentiate between the provision of services. Provision of services is the inevitable flow, rather than the actual decision that is being made. And that differentiates, if I digress ever so slightly, from some of the cases that my learned friend was bringing to the attention of the Court, where children are involved in children, that 1989 cases. In those cases, you are dealing with supervisory jurisdiction, you're dealing with cases where there are children in need, and the local authority is making a decision about whether those children are in fact in need. That is a different situation to when you're dealing with an age assessment case, where the only question is a pure objective question of fact for the Court, and that is, is the child a child? So, my lord, that, I think, takes us to how I invite the Court to deal with the point that the Court makes, this circular point. I think probably important I very quickly deal with the point made by my learned friend relating to the upper tribunal's judgment. My submission in relation to that is quite simple. That is a particular set of circumstances dealing with specific disclosure, not interim relief, and we are in a very different scenario when we're dealing with interim relief. There are very different tests to apply. And I think I would go to make a secondary submission to suggest that actually, if you apply in interim relief context Lavender J.'s judgment in S, as a preserving of the status quo, then actually you should be treating them as a child. So, my lord, I think, in terms of the higher authority, if I put it that way, I think that deals with my submissions on firstly the principles of interim relief, but also the surrounding principles, the UK treaty obligations, the policy framework, the status quo, and how these all, in my submission, are important contexts to what tests should be in applying interim relief in age assessment cases. Ultimately, I say that the DeFalco test would set the bar far too high and appropriately high, and remove the discretion and context from the Court. Before I end my submissions on this section of the ground, my lord, if I may, there's some examination of the first instance authorities may assist the Court. I'll do my best to go through the relative speed. The first point, I think, to make before I even turn to those, which is, I should say, in my skeleton argument, paragraph 28. My learned friend made the point, and I think his ultimate submission was, well, before BG, the Courts were going to be applying DeFalco, and Michael Fordham QC, now Mr. Justice Fordham in BG, has effectively created this whole new test. My lord, my answer to that before we get into those authorities is simply, I'm not aware of any case where the DeFalco test was being applied in an age assessment interim relief context. Bearing in mind that we have from 2009, when the Court gave its judgment, the Supreme Court gave its judgment, creating effectively the age assessment jurisdiction. If there were any cases where DeFalco was applied to these judgments, one would think that some of them had been reported. I'm not aware of any. That's not, of course, to say they don't exist, simply I'm not aware of any reported judgment, whether makes that point. It is then worth, I think, if I may, my lord, going to BG, because Mr. Justice Fordham, Michael Fordham as he was then, does give reasons for his principled approach. And if I ask the Court to turn in the first instance to paragraph, sorry, I should say, page 110 in the authorities bundle, that is paragraph 5.
Yes.
So, my lord, I take the Court to this just to simply note that, as Mr. Justice Fordham does, that he expressly notes the differing function of the judicial review of the Court in his judicial review in an age assessment case, and makes the point, as I did earlier, that there are other types of case where more conventional, more deferential judicial review functions will play a part. The next paragraph I would take the Court to, if I may, is paragraph 30.
Yes.
And at the bottom of that paragraph, from four lines up, the Court will see that in that particular case, no, neither of the Council before the Court suggested that a strong prima facie case test should apply, and indeed the Court satisfies itself that even if it did, that it would have been met.
Yes.
And then, if I may, then take the Court to paragraph 33, because this is an important paragraph in Mr. Justice Fordham's judgment, because this is where Mr. Justice Fordham sets out the differences that I say the Court can adopt in this particular appeal. In his judgment, there is a further consideration that arises in the present context. Parliament, as explained by the Supreme Court, has imposed in the present area a heightened duty on the reviewing court to evaluate objective facts for itself. Mr. Justice Fordham in BG clearly sets out why he takes the approach he does. And as I put in submissions earlier, a key factor in the context of interim relief in judicial reviews of age assessments has got to be that there is a different test to be applied, there is a different context, and that arises out of the case of A. in Croydon. And if I may, then take the Court down to paragraph 39.
Yes.
And there, the Court makes reference in all the circumstances of the case, and in the context of the best interest of the child, the protective precautionary approach with the law for good reason expects the benefit of doubt, as is sometimes described in the authorities, have in regard to each of the points that have been put forward by the parties. He finds the balance of convenience, then comes down clearly in favour of the grant of interim relief. And I make that point, my lord, because these are effectively the points I invite the Court to occur with. There is relevance in the differing test that arises out of A. in the Supreme Court. There is difference in that the best interests of children should be playing a part, that arises out of the UN CRC, that arises out of Article 8, as I would trust the Court. There is a difference in that there is a protective precautionary approach that arises out of Mr. Justice Lavender's decision and the various guidance that I've taken the Court to. So, my lord, it is not correct to say that Mr. Justice Fordham effectively created a different test. What he did was keep to the original test and set out a number of factors which he considers to be very important in age assessment judicial reviews. And in my submission, the Court can take notice of that and adopt that approach. My lord, it's probably important that I, not to all of the judgments, but take the Court to some other first instance judgments, just to make the point, this is not Mr. Justice Fordham simply making his own way. There are other judges who have followed the exact same process and come to their own decisions. The first, if I may, that I will take the Court to is that of A. S. If I may, ask the Court to turn the authorities bundle to page 237.
Yes. Which paragraph?
And, my lord, you see, paragraph 9, you see that there was a, the debate was very much the one that we are having in court here. There's a difference between the parties necessary to show a strong prima facie case. At paragraph 11, I have asked the Court to look slightly down the page. You have the observation akin to the observation of my lady this morning. In the last three lines, context was everything. Here, the context was the Court would have to decide for itself if the claimant was a child when the assessment was completed. And then, at paragraph 13, it goes over the page. You see, Mr. Justice Nichol in that case concludes that the strength of the case, the strong, there's no need for a strong prima facie case.
Sorry, which paragraph?
I'm sorry, it's paragraph 13. It's the bottom of that page, and it goes over.
Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, yeah.
And Mr. Justice Nichol notes, as in line with my submission, there's no hard and fast rule that there should be a strong prima facie case, even though relief might be characterized as mandatory. But he does note that that characterization could be taken into account in assessing the balance of convenience, and the strength of the claim could also be taken into account of the balance of convenience. This, as I say, fully in line with the discretion of the Court and the context which appears before it.
So this is actually the first decision in the line, really, because in the BG case, as Mr. Fordham QC, as he then was said, that wasn't in dispute. It was argued what the test was.
Correct. The Council in BG were agreed as to what the tests were. This is the first where there's been, it would appear, active debate. It's the first I have come across, and in that case, Mr. Justice Nichol comes to the same conclusions that were agreed in BG. My lord, I then ask the Court to consider very briefly the case of AXA, and that's Mr. Justice Garnum's judgment, and that is in the supplementary authorities bundle at page 228. And in particular, if I may, start the Court at paragraph 19, at the bottom of that page.
Yes.
And you'll see the arguments, 19 and then going over to 20, one party arguing that the standard procedure, the seriousness should be tried and balance of convenience test should apply. At 20, with a reference to a case of Nelson, that the DeFalco test should apply. So again, argument has been heard. And then, back down to paragraph 22, Mr. Justice Garnum coming to the same conclusion, whilst he said there's also analogy with Nelson, the circumstances in which the Court may not insist upon a prima facie case before the grant of a mandatory injunction. As Nichol J. observed, context was everything, and the context is that the Court will have to decide if the claimant was a child. So, my lord, I take the Court to those three authorities, because they are, I say, important observations that I invite the Court to adopt, and that we have three High Court judges all making the same decision, and they are, two of them heard after argument. I don't want to take the Court to all of the first instance authorities, but if I may, ask the Court's direction back to my skeleton argument, and I can run through quickly, I think, just to make the point. We have paragraph 31, A. in Manchester, where Matthew Gullit, J.C., sitting as a Deputy High Court Judge, accepted and adopted the approach in BG. You have paragraph 32, A. H. in Kent, where Heather William, Q.C., applied the American cyanomyte test as modified for public law purposes. You have paragraph 33, A.R.M. in London Borough, Brent, where Benjamin Douglas Jones, Q.C., also considered the line of authority, including DeFalco, and concluded that it does not support the proposition in interim relief in an age assessment case that a strong prima facie case is necessary. 34, M.O. in Newham, Philip Moch, K.C., coming to the same conclusion. 35, B.A.A., Liverpool City Council, His Honour Judge Pearce, also considering the authorities, including DeFalco. And so he's not persuaded of this binding authority that requires him to apply an Hans Merckx test. And then you come down to K.R.A. and Cheshire East Council, which is a local authority my learned friend took you to earlier. If I may, very briefly, again, I'll ask the Court to do that, because there may be assistance, and in particular in the authorities bundle, page 286.
Yes.
And, my lord, I just, the key point, I think, because you have been taken to the ratio already of this case, but the key point is in paragraph one, and that is, Mr. Justice Fordham, again noting that age assessment, in paragraph one, age assessment claims raise an objective factual question as to whether the claimant is or is not a child for substantive determination of fresh in judicial review proceedings. And then, the bottom of that paragraph, following FZ and SB, the permission stage arguable question is whether there's a factual case taken at its highest. So that is the reference earlier made to there being a different permission stage test. That, Mr. Justice Fordham noted, was an important point. As the Court has already noted, he goes through an impressive list of working illustrations within that judgment, and then it is at 15 and 16, that Mr. Justice Fordham, in my submission, comes to the sensible conclusion that the reliable threshold test has to be the permission stage arguable test, and he sets out his reasons why at paragraph 15, and very strongly makes the point at 16, there's no higher threshold requirement of a strong prima facie case. And, my lord, I've taken the Court through a number of authorities that say the same thing, he has done the same thing in that judgment.
Yes.
So, my lord, I perhaps conclude that particular point by simply, no, I confess, one more thing I should do, because there are, to make sure the Court is fully aware, there are two cases post-RRR that have considered interim relief in an age assessment context. I don't plan to take the Court to them unless you wish me to, because they both follow the same line.
Which are they?
They are MS and Kent County Council, which, if it assists, you can find in the supplementary authorities bundle at page 279. Is, I should say, 279 is the particularly important paragraphs, which are paragraphs 28 and 29. In that case, it was the American cyanomyte medical justice case that was applied.
Yes.
And you have, even more recently, the case of A.Y.X. in the London Borough of Camden, that is at supplementary authorities bundle 285, and in particular, paragraph 13 on page 288 is relevant, again, adopting the American cyanomyte medical justice test. Now, I should caveat, I suppose, with those two judgments, important, I say, of course, because they are post-RRR, and the Courts are continuing to apply the test that I submitted as the correct one. Also important to highlight to the Court that, as far as I can detect from both of those judgments, there doesn't appear to be any discussion of RRR or DeFalco.
Yeah.
So, the weight the Court will put on them may be affected by those points. It may simply be that the Courts accepted that actually DeFalco doesn't have the impact that is suggested in this case that it does.
Thank you.
So, my lord, in relation to, I suppose that is my ground 1A. I don't think I need to rehearse that point, but there is substantial authority from higher courts and lower courts that set out, I say, why a gateway test is inapplicable and not appropriate.
Yes.
I can deal, I think, and I should deal, very quickly. I can deal, I think, and I should deal very quickly with the second reason that the respondent puts forward as to why the court should reject ground one. And that is the quite simple point of, in the event that we are incorrect and there is a strong primifacy gateway test, our submission is, well, in these circumstances, the judge in any event properly applied it. As the court's already noted, at no point, as far as we are aware, was the DeFalco RRR test brought to the attention of the court. Now, the skeleton argument of my learned friend is in the court bundle. You can see that in the court bundle at tab 8, paragraph 2. I'm sorry, paragraph, tab 8, page 2. I would ask the court to turn to...
Paragraph 4.
Paragraph 4.
Yes.
That sets out the submission that it is the American cyanamide test.
Yes.
My lord, I don't think I need to take you to it because it is this respondent's submission, well, the claimant's submission below that that is correct.
Yes.
And it is the claimant's submission above that that is correct. I make that point simply because it cannot have been of any surprise if the judge didn't address in terms the RRR-DeFalco test, if at no point the judge was taken to it.
Yes.
Criticism of the judge would be unwarranted on that basis. The point I then make, my lord, is that after the judgment was given, the RRR-DeFalco point was raised as a ground for permission to appeal. The court rightly noted earlier that there's no mention in the refusal of permission on ground one, the only document we have from the judge that deals with the post-judgment proceedings of any consideration of the RRR-DeFalco test. What I can say, my lord, is that in my submission, by bringing it up at that stage, that is effectively exercising the English and Emery jurisdiction, that is at paragraph 42 in my skeleton argument, is effectively asking the judge to clarify their reasons, which is a quite appropriate thing to do if it's thought that the judge may have erred in law.
I'm not sure that's right, is it? It's asking the judge to make a decision on a basis that wasn't argued before.
Yes, well...
So it's not clarifying a decision already made. There's no way she could have decided there was a strong primifacy case she wasn't asked to.
No, my lord, I think the problem, that must be right, my lord, but then it must be incumbent upon the judge to be able to add to those reasons if it is said that the reasons that would be given are insufficient. And if a new element is brought to her attention, then she must be in a position where she is able to clarify or correct those reasons. And I say that is what the judge did. So there's no criticism of it being brought up at that stage if it was thought to be an important point. But the judge must be allowed to answer that point. And, my lord, I say that that is exactly what she did. If it assists, certainly the way we have been approaching this appeal is that it is an agreed point that she did deal with those additional reasons when refusing permission to appeal. And you have no transcript of that, because I thought it was an agreed point. If I take you to my learned friend's skeleton argument, in particular, that is in the court bundle, tab 2, page 4.
Yes.
Excuse me, my lord, I'm catching up. And if I ask the court to turn in particular to paragraph 20.
Yes.
The deputy judge refused permission to appeal on ground one, the basis there is a finding...
Sorry, what's your, whose skeleton?
This is my learned friend's skeleton.
Yes.
Which is why, certainly, we have approached this on a, we thought, agreed basis. The judge did consider the strong primifacy case test afterwards. And what the judge did was look to paragraphs 21 and 22 of her judgment. And so when you read those together, those meet the relevant test. Now...
Well, yes. So as she's saying, not, since she wasn't asked to apply that test, it's difficult to see how she can point to paragraphs in her judgment which addressed it. But what perhaps she was saying was, on the basis of the facts, as I found in paragraphs 21 and 22, if I am now asked to apply the strong primifacy case test, that is what I find.
Correct, my lord, and that must be right. And my submission is, it must be perfectly permissible for a judge who is not addressed on the law to then go on to say, if you consider factors X, Y, Z, that I say means that there is a real issue to be tried. And then you can say that, based on those same factors, I say there is a strong primifacy case. So it's perfectly permissible for the judge to make that point at that stage in the context of how it came to her in this case.
Yes. Thank you.
And, my lord, I won't dwell on it, but at paragraph 44, you can see, of my skeleton, I apologize.
Yes.
You can see exactly why the judge would have come to such a conclusion. It sets out, in particular, in her judgment at, and if it assists the court to go back to it at some point, it is at paragraph 21 of her judgment, 22 and 25. But I set out there, bullet pointed, the host of reasons why there obviously would be a strong primifacy case. You have a case here where there are medical professionals who have formed a view on the respondent's age and vulnerabilities. You have two emergency social workers who form the same view. You have an advocacy and casework manager and a safeguarding lead who have, actually, a previous senior social worker who also support that claim.
Right.
Manchester City Council, I won't labour the point, my lord, but simply...
Thank you.
There are a host of reasons why she would have come to...
All of this is addressed to the strength of the case that the claimant was a child.
Yes.
What else had to be proved in the judicial review?
I'm sorry, what else?
Was part of the elements of the claim for judicial review?
Oh, I see, my lady, yes, there was, there is effectively, it's brought on, as my lord mentioned earlier, brought on a number of grounds, but effectively, there was the precedent fact ground and there was evidence as to that, and that obviously supports the evidence as to the precedent fact ground. There were procedural irregularities argued as well.
So you say that's all that needed to be proved was the precedent fact that he was a child and then the JR would succeed?
And so the permission would have been granted?
No, we're looking at the strength of the JR claim now. So do you say it is simply the precedent fact that needed to be proved?
Yes, yes, my lady, so...
So questions of it being academic don't come into it at all?
No, no, my lady, no, I don't see how they would come to...
Well, JRs usually fail if they're academic.
Yes, my lady, I think it's a different, it's a different point that I can go on to address. I should say, it almost, it fits a little bit more neatly with ground two, I think.
Yeah. So on this ground, you say, all that needed to be proved is that he's a child and on that point, he had a strong case?
Yes, that's right, that's right, my lady. He had a strong primifacy case. The, of course, the point made about academicity is not lost, but it almost overlaps between, I suppose, between ground one and ground two, doesn't it? And I may come back to that at the moment, but with the court's leave, having spoken to my learned friend from Manchester, what we thought we might invite the court to do is hear from Manchester on ground two first, because effectively, what I would do is say, our understanding of what Manchester's position is X, far better for the court to hear directly from Manchester.
I just wanted to be clear, on ground one, you're saying the strength of the case is purely about the precedent fact?
I see, my lady.
On ground one?
I see your point, I don't think that... Yeah, this is, I think this is, so I'm getting notes from various directions, my lady. If the point is to get permission, then yes, that is all that will be required.
No, that isn't the point.
Yes.
It's not, when we're talking about the strength of the case for granting of interim relief, it isn't talking about, well, we've got this argument about whether permission is enough.
Yes, yes, my lady. I don't think I could argue that an academic point would be irrelevant. But it is easily answerable, I think, is the point. But when the...
But it's wrapped it with ground two.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. And what I would say is, the judge did also address that point and gives her reasons why it's not an academic case within the bounds of her discretion. But it, as I say, it is more easily answerable, aliding it with ground two, I think. The point, I think, seems to make is, when you're looking at whether, on the strict question of whether he was a child or not at the time, there are more than strong reasons given by the judge. Yes. And I think, my lord, my lady, the final point to make is, of course, is to draw it back to the actual test for this court, which is that set out in the Ofsted case as well. Certainly, our submission would be that, effectively, the judge exercised her discretion, as she was able to do, based upon the facts that came before her, this certainly wouldn't be an irrational decision that would have been made. And that's the basis on which, of course, this court overturned. And not simply whether it would disagree, it would have to be an irrational decision made on interim relief. And we say that certainly isn't the case here.
Could you just help me on that? You, your, at the time of the hearing before the judge, your client was being provided with accommodation by Manchester on the basis that Manchester accepted, had accepted, that he was a child.
Yes, well, and here lies the problem, my lord. Of course, for the claimant below, there's actually very little difference if he is provided with accommodation by Manchester or if he's provided with accommodation by Bedford. The important thing for him is, of course, that he obtains relief. Now, the submission that we have, that we make, is, I think, going to be in line with that of Manchester's, which is why I was going to defer to my learned friend, is effectively, on the information that was before the court at the time, that was by no means clear.
So what was by no means clear?
That he was being accommodated, he was being provided with accommodation as a child, rather than this being Manchester exercising its safeguarding duties towards a putative child. So in the situation the judge found herself in, she was entirely entitled to exercise her discretion as she did.
Sorry, I missed that distinction. It's not clear that it was X as opposed to Y, one of the two?
It's not, because, and this goes into an extent, we do now stray into ground two, which I think is going to try to lead to my learned friend, but, yes. It's the differentiation between what function Manchester was actually undertaking at the time. Because a local authority will have general safeguarding duties towards putative children. So in this particular case, you have a young man who was detected in hospital and then that is brought to the attention of the local authority, who then say, well, he appears to be a child, we will provide these services, we will make sure that he is provided with foster care or whatever, pending this, any final determination. That's very different to accepting that they have a duty. Now, at the time before the court, and in fact, to date, we are not clear whether Manchester have accepted a duty or not. And in those circumstances, it's quite permissible for the judge to adopt the line of reasoning in HA, which my learned friend accepts, and to then make interim relief orders to safeguard the child. And that is the approach, that's the differentiation, my lord. It is what function Manchester was exercising.
Just trying to remind myself of what the judge actually ordered.
Tab 4, page 1.
Thank you.
My lady. And in particular, paragraph 5, I was going to take your lordships and your ladyship to it. It was, I may as well just answer this now, secure that the claimant is provided with accommodation, care and support. It doesn't preclude, I will submit, foster care provided by another local authority. But I'm going to address that.
With those clarifications, those are, unless there are any questions, my submission's on ground one. And I pause to ask if the court is content with the suggested approach, given I would be deferring, I suppose, Manchester's initial view on its duties, whether to hear. And if the court is content, I would then reply if needs be.
Yep, okay.
I'm very grateful, unless I can assist further on ground one.
No, thank you.
I'm great.
My lords, my lady, I firstly have four overarching introductory observations. First, on the basis of the claimant's case, that this case is academic, it should have withdrawn its claim as soon as Manchester provided accommodation to the claimant. The reason for that is because its challenge, his challenge, should I say, is to the failure of Derby City Council to treat UYR as a child. That's the challenge. That is why this court has jurisdiction, because it is a matter of a statutory duty. The precedent fact is a gateway to misapply or reapply phraseology used by my learned friend for the appellant to the duty. But that's why the court has jurisdiction. If this was not a child in need, say, for example, it was a child, he was looked after by his parents and there was no statutory duty, but there was disputes as to whether he was a child or not, the court wouldn't have jurisdiction. It only has jurisdiction because it has to determine whether or not he's in need of support. Consequently, if the claim is academic, it should be withdrawn. Or alternatively, your lordships and your ladyship will continue to hear it because it is one of those small number of cases that the courts consider, are appropriate to consider, to determine, even though it is academic. That's the first point. And I'll go on, of course, in addressing ground two, to deal with why it is not only not academic, but also that there is, in my submission, a continuing duty by the appellant to the claimant. Secondly, just a general observation, because it's said too often in some of these cases by this and other courts, I submit that it has been said wrongly, that it is unedifying for local authorities to dispute about responsibility because, as judges have said expressly, it concerns public money coming from the same pot. It doesn't come from the same pot. It comes from different ratepayers, different corporations with different legal responsibilities. Moreover, as your lordship will have noted from the authorities, there are many cases, or there are a handful or two handful of authorities, not including admittedly Manchester, that have particularly onerous responsibilities. Hillingdon, because it contains Heathrow. Kent, because it contains Dover and it's closest to France. Croydon, because it hosts the Home Office's immigration centre. And you will have seen from the authorities and the names of the authorities, that point made out very clearly. Secondly, there is a risk of, or secondly, in my second point, a risk of dumping and a benefit from unlawful behaviour, which the courts have found extends not merely to a kind of wrongful or deliberately, deliberate wrongdoing, although it obviously does include that, dumping would be a good example of that. It's been found to extend to failing to comply with statutory obligations. And, so, I submit, it is important, and your lordships have this opportunity, to be very clear, insofar as clarity is necessary, and I admit perhaps it is, about both, firstly, the ground one point, which is more general, of more general application, but also about the responsibilities, the competing responsibilities of local authorities. Thirdly, I've already touched on, tab 4, page 2, the order. It is, of course, right that it would be invidious to require a young person in foster care to move from that foster care where he is potentially settled. But it is not without precedent in the authorities that are before your lordships and your ladyship to direct that one authority outside the area within which the young person is already accommodated, provides accommodation or secures accommodation within the second local authority. There are at least, in fact, there are three of those, or two of those at least, in the authorities. And I submit...
Are you going to tell us which ones at some point?
Yeah, HA and Liverpool. In fact, there are three central authorities to the point that's before your lordships and your ladyship in ground two, and those are those three authorities. A has some relevance, of course, but only as an overarching point because it's not a dispute between local authorities.
So that's A and Manchester?
No, A is, yeah, A, no, sorry, A is the Lady Hales and the Supreme Court's judgment about precedent fact. So this is obviously a central authority. So this is obviously a central authority and has implications because of what it says and what Lady Hale says in particular, as submitted in my discussion argument.
So which of the three authorities, but accommodation and another, we have?
Yes. So firstly, Liverpool and Hillingdon, which is, the tabs aren't numbered in my electronic version, but it's on page sixty-two of the PDF, which I think is page sixty-four of the paper bundle.
When you say Liverpool and Hillingdon, Liverpool's one, Hillingdon's another.
The crown on the application of Liverpool against Hillingdon.
A dispute between local authorities.
Indeed, a direct dispute.
Yes.
Secondly, the crown on the application of HA against Hillingdon, which is again not, I don't have numbered tabs. And thirdly, HJ, or perhaps that also should be the crown on the application of HJ against Croydon at London Borough Council. Those, those are the three that I will be spending time on. Those are the three that deal with this point at least obliquely. Perhaps not indirectly or forwards with this, as the learned friend for the appellant would say, but they do deal with these points and these submissions. So the, just, just to go back though, if I may, to the deputy judge's order. It is her order, her ladyship's order, that the Derby secure the provision. The meaning, what's important to remember about that is when Deputy High Court Judge Ridge made that order, she was aware that this young person was already being accommodated by Manchester. It was not countenanced that that young person would have to move. It is of course very common for local authorities to pay for and indeed to provide accommodation in other areas. That is not uncommon. Whether or not that means that their section twenty duty is at an end is of course a matter that may concern and does concern your lordships and your ladyship, but it's not uncommon. And so in my submission, there is no reason why that order cannot apply by being a requirement for Derby to pay for the accommodation and perhaps to govern and to manage the accommodation already being provided by a foster carer in Manchester.
The individual had been moved from Derby to Manchester by the Home Office.
Yes.
So what continuing obligations, responsibilities does Derby have? You're coming to the word.
I'm coming to that. This is an overarching, the reason I'm, I'm not, I'm going to deal with these, these four and then two other, two other points relating to the case more generally. At first, because it, it, it's very important that, that your lordships and your ladyship don't think wrongly in my submission that, that this is somehow an academic case and a case where there's an order against Manchester, an order against, sorry, Derby, would require this young person to move potentially against his best interests and his wishes. Two different things, because your lordships and your ladyship will be aware, of course, that Lady Hale has said in another case that there is, children are not necessarily the best judges, I think it's one of the authorities possibly, in fact, it is referred to in A by her and by Lord Hope, that, that they are not necessarily the best judges of their best interests and that while their wishes and feelings will be given higher deference when they are older and more mature, it's not necessarily determinative, but even so, it, it, it's not suggested that it would necessarily be in this young person's best interests to move, but her ladyship knew that he was in Manchester being provided with foster care by Manchester, albeit then in hospital, and nevertheless ordered Derby to secure that accommodation. That's critical.
Well, the, the order might require, if it's enforced, it might require the young person to move because it doesn't require that accommodation in Manchester is funded.
It, it is open to your lordships and your ladyship to vary that order and to specify that by securing, it means that Derby is responsible for the financial.
It's looking very like a claim by you against Derby now.
No, I'm not, there's no application to do that. And I am only acting as counsel to an interested party rather than a party. We haven't been made a party, it is conceivable that we could have been, but we haven't, but I'm still able.
You could have brought your own application.
I don't submit, I'm not submitting that it is necessary to do that because the order is very clear. I submit it is sufficiently clear that, that the Derby secure that accommodation. Doesn't preclude Derby from funding the accommodation by Manchester to ensure that it continues.
It certainly doesn't preclude it, but equally it doesn't preclude them from saying, right, we'll, we'll leave you back to Derby.
It doesn't, but they would, they would have to have regard to this young person's best interests if they did that. And, and therefore, it follows from that, that if it was in their, in this young person's best interests, after this authority had been required to secure his accommodation, if it was in his best interests to live not only in Manchester but with this foster carer, it would be their duty under the Act and under their duty to secure the best interests of the child to permit him to stay in the accommodation within which he had been placed, but to secure it by funding it.
Sorry, I plan this slightly difficult to follow. He is being accommodated by Manchester.
He is.
There isn't any need for Derby to do anything?
Well, there, there.
He's got accommodation.
There is, because as I will be developing in my submissions, that the High Court and the Court of Appeal have found in the past, rightly in my submission, that the fact that one local authority is paying for the accommodation of another, in fact, it's, it, it, it's H Liverpool and Hillingdon is the case in particular. Because I'll get to this point right away, it was my fourth introductory point. Malona Friend said, and I quote him directly from his oral submission.
Sorry, we're potentially taking you out of a course, which I don't think we intend to do.
You're not.
Have you finished on three?
Well, I, well, I have, because it, it follows naturally into four.
Okay.
So, so the, the, Malona Friend said for Derby, there's never been a case when someone who is being accommodated by A is required to be accommodated by B, local authority. That, I'm afraid, is not the case. He may be right, although, as I said in my submissions, one would have to analyse every single extempore judgment to know that this was the case, which nobody can possibly have done in this case at the bar or anywhere else, and there's no suggestion that they have. He may be right to say that that's the case in terms of accommodating as a child, but it isn't the case accommodating at all, because in Liverpool and Hillingdon, as I will set out in due course, one local authority was accommodating him as Liverpool, as a, an adult, but not as a child.
Well, if it assists, Mr Hall, that's exactly what I meant. There's never been a case where some other local authority is accommodating as a child.
As a child. I, 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 I'm not, I'm not meaning to be unduly critical of Malona Friend, but, but it, it is nevertheless important for your lordships and your ladyships to have that in mind when approaching this case. And it does feed in, I submit, to the interim relief that was given because it is ad idem with, other than the fact, other than the fact that Liverpool was not accommodating HA as a child, other than that, it is identical.
Manchester is providing accommodation under section twenty, couldn't be providing accommodation under anything else.
Yes.
So that, as I said, there's, on the face of the order, there's nothing for Derby to do because the claimant is being provided with accommodation, care and support pursuant to section twenty by Manchester.
Well, it, it, it says, the defendant shall treat, i.e. Derby shall treat the claimant as.
Understand that, and secure that the claimant is provided. Well, they, they don't have to do anything because the claimant is being provided with accommodations, care and support pursuant to section twenty by Manchester.
But.
So does this come down to who's funding it? Is that what it is?
Well, certainly, Manchester would be content if by Derby secured the accommodation they provide pending this hearing in the Court of Appeal. If they secure that accommodation by funding it, certainly that would be the case. There is another possibility, which I'm sure your lordships and nobody in this court would want, which is that Manchester could come to a view, obviously they'd have to come to a view after the proper process, that they, that, that the young person was not a child and then that decision would have to be challenged. But that comes back to my first point, which is that if that is the case, if the section twenty duty is being applied by Manchester and if there is, the case is academic, why hasn't the appellant, why hasn't the claimant withdrawn? They haven't withdrawn because it is not secure, the accommodation from Manchester.
Well, I'm sorry, that's, that's completely circular. The claimant hasn't withdrawn the case, not the claimant saying it's academic.
Indeed.
It's Derby that's saying it's academic. The fact that the claimant doesn't accept that it's academic doesn't make it not academic.
No, but, 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 but it, it speaks to the fact that the claimant rightly accepts that this is not secure accommodation and also if your lordships were.
So is this a hypothetical, that there's a, are you saying there's a risk that this, when you say the accommodation is not secure, what would happen, have to happen in order for it to become insecure, actually? Would have to be an assessment by Manchester?
Yes.
Manchester would have to then conclude that the individual is an adult, not a child, and that decision would then be challenged?
Yes.
Well, it might be challenged, it might not, if it was based on proper evidence.
Yes, it might be challenged, might not be.
It, it might not be, but, but, but it probably would.
But until then, how can you say it's not secure?
Because it was emergency accommodation provided, remember, my lords, that the accommodation was provided because an NHS worker not responsible to the local authority put this young person on a children's ward. It's right to say that he was then accommodated as a child by the local authority. But without being aware of the existing age determination and moreover, without accepting that the section twenty duty by Derby had been discharged because the point of HA and Liverpool and Hillingdon and in, to some extent, HJ, albeit, I'll get to that, is that that, the responsibility under section twenty is not solely geographical. It, it starts by being a geographical duty, but it cannot be discharged by an unlawful act and an unlawful act is ceasing to treat the claimant as a child. Now, of course, that may not be, in this case, an unlawful act. That rather depends upon whether the upper tribunal, in due course, determines.
The, the, sorry to keep coming back to it, the, the claimant was moved not by Derby.
By the Home Office.
By the Home Office.
Yeah.
So ceased to be in the Derby's area. So how do Derby's obligations under section twenty continue? How's the, the, the claimant, how does the claimant continue to be a putative child within their area once he's been moved by the Home Office to another area? Not by Derby, I don't, Derby didn't do anything, it just happened.
For the same reason that Hillingdon retained responsibility when the claimant in that case was moved as here by the Home Office. Because they continued, but for their unlawful act or potentially unlawful act of treating HA as a, an adult, but for that, they would have continued to accommodate him either in their own area or somewhere else and continued to be responsible for his care in every way.
I see.
Because that unlawful, of that potentially unlawful act, and obviously the purpose of interim relief is to hold the fort, to retain the status quo ante. As that was a potentially unlawful act, the High Court, Mr Justice Bean, as he then was, held that it was appropriate to direct that Hillingdon, not Liverpool, be responsible for that care. In that case, as in this, after the young person had been moved to Liverpool, it was apparent that he wanted to live there. Indeed, he was moved by Hillingdon. I'll take your lordships to the reference shortly, but he was moved by Hillingdon for that reason. And nevertheless, it was found that Hillingdon had not maintained.
Sorry, I thought you said it moved by the Home Office.
Moved by the Home, no, he was moved by Hilling, that, that one he was moved by Hillingdon, so HA, two different cases, in HA.
We're, we're striding two different points. One is, your, your, your submission that the accommodation provided by Manchester was not secure. And so you, I, I think you, you accepted that, that it is secure absent an assessment by, an age assessment by Manchester with the result that, with the outcome, that he is considered to be an adult. And then it would become insecure. But absent that, subject to that happening, it is secure.
Yes, but in the same way, the young person in HA.
Shall we look at those? Shall we, would it be helpful to look at those authorities? This is still your fourth overarching point.
It is, and, and I had two others, but I, can I just deal with those two others first? Because they're not the four overarching points, but they are.
Please do, sorry.
I, I just, because your lordships are going to give judgment that will bind the administrative court, I, I, I wanted to bring to your lordships' attention two judgments, one in the bundle and the other not.
Is this on ground one?
It is on ground one and it's, it's in relation to the general duties, just to, to ensure that your, your lordships, when summarising those general aspects of this jurisdiction.
Yes.
Are right. So what, my, my, my Lord, Lord Justice, is that, my, my lords asked a question in relation to the different tests or the different requirements before and after assessment. So there is a judgment of Lord, of Mr Justice Poole, which is the crown on the application of AB in the London Borough of Brent, and the reference is twenty twenty-one EWHC two eight four three brackets admin, close bracket.
Two eight four three.
Two eight four three.
Thank you.
In which it was held that the local authority was in breach of its duty by declining to provide accommodation pending assessment, but that the tests supplied to grant interim relief, and this is paragraph twenty of Mr Justice Poole's judgment. The tests supplied to grant interim relief and permission after such age assessments had been completed were of course different from the test which this court has to apply. That's the first authority. The second is the last authority in the supplementary authorities bundle, which is Darbo and Camorra and Italy. It's the final tab. And, and that is authority for the fact that pending assessments, a putative child must be accommodated as a child. So, so in terms of the overarching jurisdiction of this court and the responsibilities of local authorities, those are important authorities that your lordships and your ladyship may wish to, whichever of you or several are, are making the, the lead judgment in this case, may wish to refer to.
Are Manchester taking a neutral position on that?
They are, on ground one, yes, but I, I bring those to your lordships and your ladyships' attention. The, the other overarching point is this, and it would do, it could do, as I speak, as, as Malona Friends do, I think, as somebody who deals with these cases regularly, it could do with a little bit of clarity from this court, frankly, that this point that I'm going to make. I suggest that the answer to the question that your lordships and ladyship and Malona Friend for the respondent were grappling with is, is this. The only question before the High Court at a permission hearing and before the upper tribunal on a fact finding determination is whether or not a person is either, there is a real prospect of a person being found to be a child or they are a child. The public law factors cannot in and of themselves lead to a grant of permission. They may assist the court to find that if those public law errors are established, for example, that there was no minded to assessment, for example, that there was, when there should have been a, an appropriate adult, not a requirement, but something that might help, a fair process, for example, that there wasn't an appropriate interpreter. Those might lead to a conclusion that there's either a real prospect of the young person being a child. Those might lead to a conclusion that there's either a real prospect of the young person being a child, or he is a child at the assessment. But if that doesn't lead to that conclusion, then the decision would have been the same anyway, and there's no public law error, and the precedent fact decision would be unchanged. There is unfortunately a lack of clarity in some of the judgments below, including HAM, about that. So, yes, in a way, public law, public law challenges can be determined alone, although it's very much the practice now of the High Court not to deal with them and to send a case off to the upper tribunal. But they don't in and of themselves, and should not in and of themselves, lead to permission being given, because they would, for the same reason as in any public law challenge, a public law error will only lead to the court giving permission for a judicial review, or at the end of a judicial review, making a, an order if, but for that public law error, the decision, that, that, that public law error leads to an unlawful decision. And the unlawful decision, of course, here is to not provide UIR with the treatment that he has a right to expect under the Children Act. It would be helpful in my submission for your lordships and your ladyship to clarify that in your judgment. But I can turn now to ground two. What I wanted to do, actually, is go through those three cases thematically.
Right.
And, and show what I submit is a common thread, which is that the section twenty duty under the Children Act is not peculiar to where somebody lives, and is not determined and ended by another local authority taking responsibility, either for that person as an adult, or for that matter, as a child.
Before you do that, can I just ask you to, to clarify the answer to my Lord, Lord Justice Moylan's question earlier? What, what continuing obligations can Derby have when it was the Home Office that moved the individual to Manchester? Is your answer that the Home Office would not have moved the individual to Manchester if Derby had made what may turn out to be the, the right decision, that this person is a child?
I confess that, my lord, that I wasn't going to give that answer, but that is a very neat, if I may say so, without being facetious, way of putting it, that, that is absolutely right. There's, there's that nervous, that actus intervenis of the Home Office, which, of course, this is a tall case, but, but nevertheless, it's sort of new act of the Home Office, but it doesn't break, as it were, the chain of causation. Again, we're not in taut, but, but if your lordships follow the chain of a statutory duty, because it, it was based upon the unlawful act of the, in this case Derby. Potentially, we don't take a view as to whether Derby's decision was right or wrong in treating this young person as a, an adult, rather than a child. So yes, that is exactly, that is a very neat, and that, and that would be why, when both Hillingdon, in fact, I think possibly Hillingdon in both cases, Paul Hillingdon having Heathrow is a difficulty. Hillingdon sent, had continuing duties in, in both of those cases. So, looking then at Liverpool and Hillingdon first, it's actually the first in time and the only of these three authorities that is a Court of Appeal authority. This young person was assessed as an adult by Liverpool. The claimant didn't challenge that assessment. He was moved from Hillingdon, from Liverpool to Hillingdon by the Home Office again, paragraph three.
Sorry, paragraph three of the judgment?
Of the judgment, which is, my apologies, which is at page sixty two, I think. Yes, sixty-two of the paper and sixty-four of the of, of the PDF bundle. He was then found to be a child by the Immigration Tribunal, relying on a doctor who, it has to be said, was later discredited, but nevertheless, found to be a child. And Hillingdon contended that it wasn't responsible and did not assess whether or not the young person was a child, which it is, it was found was their statutory duty. So it's not on all fours with this case, because it isn't an interim relief case where both authorities have assessed, and certainly not where the defendant has failed to assess, or has assessed. But, but the facts are worth considering.
Could the young person bring a claim against Hillingdon initially, who hadn't assessed?
Yes, so the claim is, although-
And then that's went to the upper tribunal.
So, so this is a case where the Court of Appeal found that although there was an assessment by one local authority-
Yeah.
And he, the young person, moved to another local authority. I accept that it, it, the, the Court of Appeal did not say-
I just wanted to be clear, but it started with the young person bringing a claim against Hillingdon-
Yes.
Which the upper tribunal determined and found he was a child.
No, no, that's not, no. Sorry, my apologies. He, he was assessed to be an adult by Liverpool. There was an ongoing immigration claim at the same time, immigration appeal. The Immigration Tribunal, without help making a final determination, or in fact, the Immigration Tribunal, what's now the first tier tribunal, but then was, I think, the Immigration Tribunal, found that he was, rejected his asylum claim, but it's not entirely clear from this whether it was the upper tribunal or the Immigration Tribunal, or the Immigration Appeal Tribunal, I think it would have then have been. But one of those found that he was an adult, on the basis of the evidence of Dr. Beech-
An adult or a child?
A, a child, sorry. And it was then, notwithstanding that decision that was contrary to Liverpool's assessment, the local authority, Hillingdon, did not undertake an age assessment and refused to be responsible for this person's care, although, actually, it, it-
So Hillingdon sought to rely on Liverpool's assessment, even though by then the Immigration Tribunal had found he was a child?
Highly problematic, one might think, and the kind of circumstances where circumstance, where a local authority would not be permitted to have that reliance. It would be similar, for example, didn't happen in this case, but it would be similar for Bedford, for a situation where Bedford, for example, had assessed, as it did, this young person to be an adult. Derby then had assessed him to be a child, and once he was moved, Manchester treated him as an adult, but that's not this case. So paragraph nine shows that Hillingdon did take him back to Liverpool. So another factual distinction of that case.
So that at the time of, right, so was the, the claim was brought against Hillingdon after Hilling, Hilling, Hillingdon had taken him to Liverpool?
Yes.
But it was saying that the duty arose while he was in Hillingdon?
Because of the fact that Hillingdon became aware that a tribunal had found him to be a child, but then he was in its area.
At that date?
At that date, Liverpool had been accepted, it's accepted that their duty had ended, perhaps because there was no challenge to Liverpool's decision. So it stood as a matter of public law, but the Immigration Tribunal then, or the Immigration Appeal Tribunal, not clear which, then decided that he was a child, and then on that basis, it was hit for Hillingdon to determine to it for itself. And it could have come to a different decision to the Immigration Tribunal, and that may or may not have resulted in a challenge, but that would have been open to it, but it didn't even do that. Instead, it moved him back to Liverpool. Its argument amongst other things, which appears later in the judgment, is that the young person or the, the older boy, almost an adult, was mature, had a clear wish to be accommodated in Liverpool where he had been, and therefore they moved him back to Liverpool. Whether they were actually dumping, as it were, him, him and his financial consequences or not, isn't a found finding of fact made-
But they did take him to the municipal building.
They did, indeed. One might draw one's own conclusions from that. And, but to quote, to quote paragraph ten of the judgment of Lord Justice Dyson, Liverpool has maintained AK and provided him with accommodation since he was returned, I think that should be HA, but on the basis that he is an adult and that he, it has no responsibilities pursuant to the Children Act.
So the facts of this case seem to be very, very different from the facts in ours.
They, they are, but what they do show is that Hillingdon maintained its responsibility for AK, AK is the correct initial, notwithstanding that he did not continue to live in its area. And the reason for that is because they had not discharged and completed their section twenty duty.
Because they dumped him in a municipal building.
Exactly. And I'm not suggesting that that's what happened in this case, but that does show that the section twenty duty can continue, even when somebody is not-
I, I don't think, yes, I don't think that could be disputed, but it depends.
Yes. But it, but, but what I submit is that HA, I'm going to go on to HA now, because HA, the facts are-
So is there anything else in this, any other paragraph in this authority? Because if, if you look at the grounds of appeal in nineteen, the, the first one was that Hillingdon did not discharge its duty under section twenty. And it didn't discharge its duty under section twenty because, by not carrying out an age assessment. But if it had, as I understand it, by the day, by the date on which it had, would have discharged that duty, it would have been bound by the upper tribunal or the tribunal's decision that the individual was a child. Is that what it was or not?
No, I don't say that. It, it wouldn't have been bound to do that. It, it would have been bound to assess, because the upper trib, the, 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 either the IAT or the Immigration Tribunal, whichever it was, had come to a different decision to Liverpool. And consequently, there were two competing decisions. One or other of them might be right, neither were binding on it-
I see.
As a matter of law.
Right.
Because clearly, they were not, it wasn't a court decision, and it wasn't, and Hillingdon were not party to the decision, so there's no issue estoppel, and there's no res judicata. So they're not bound by that decision, but what they are bound to do is assess.
Well, they're bound, aren't they? They, they now are aware that there's someone within their jurisdiction who is arguably a child.
Yes.
They have two choices. They can treat that person as a child and provide accommodation under section twenty, other services. But the only way they can't do that is by carrying out an assessment and finding he's an adult. And that, that was their obligation. And that didn't cease because they moved him to Liverpool.
No.
That's all the case down to.
Exactly, exactly. But that, that unless there's, what, what I would ask, was going to draw to your lordship's attention is, is paragraph twenty-two, which is at page sixty-six of the paper bundle. And Hillingdon could not, could have said that it was discharging this section twenty duty without prejudice to its contention that it had no obligation to do so. I, I pause to say that's Manchester's position. But it did not take that course. It did not even carry out a reassessment of AK's age to satisfy itself that he was a child and the Children Act was engaged. Instead, it merely ascertained that AK wished to go to Liverpool and assisted him to achieve his wish, maintaining throughout that the section twenty duty was on Liverpool. I, I pause at that juncture to say that that's important to this extent. Firstly, albeit perhaps it's an over to comment, because the facts didn't arise in that case, it does envisage circumstances where, without prejudice, acceptance of responsibility on a conditional basis can apply. But, but also, because it's a recognition that the reason that a local authority has duties under section twenty, which are geographic, primarily geographically focused, is to ensure that no child falls through the gaps. And it would be, in my submission, invidious as a matter of public policy to penalise Manchester for taking a responsible decision that a person that a nurse said was a child who was in its area, who had no recourse to any other potential care, and gave that young person care as a child, should be penalised by that because it was not aware that that child was the responsibility, or might have been the responsibility, of another local authority that had failed unlawfully, potentially, in the case of Derby, if this case claim is successful, to accommodate him as a child. And that is another reason why both Mr. Justice Bean and others have found that it is important. In fact, there are other cases that refer to dumping in, in, in adult cases in disputes against local, between local authorities under the CARE Act. I think one is St Helens in Manchester, as I recall, I can give your lordships and your ladyship the, the reference after this, and that's a very recent case, about twenty twenty-one, it, it, all thereabouts. And so there is a public policy objection to encouraging local authorities to discharge, fail to discharge their duties and to dump, but it doesn't solely apply to dumping cases. It applies to all cases where they are not discharging their lawful duties.
Why can't Manchester simply claim against Derby for the costs if they say there's been a failure on the part of Derby that's caused them to incur costs?
Because while unjust enrichment cases have been found, have been held, in the case of Surrey, Surrey and Croydon, I think, to be available, it is difficult to see how they could succeed in circumstances where one local authority simply looks after a child pending the determination of a case of this nature. And, and in any event, as a matter of public policy, I submit it would be unattractive to encourage that further level of litigation. Now, there is, as your ladyship will be aware, under the CARE Act, provision for the Secretary of State to adjudicate decisions where ordinary residence is in dispute. But that is not the case for cases under the Children Act, primarily because of the purely geographical case test, rather than ordinary residence test. And there, and again, coming back to my observation and submission, that it's because children must not fall through the cracks, and there needs to be in the same way that the Mental Health Act has authority, has, has some responsibilities that are predicated on the basis of geographical area, rather than ordinary residence. Whereas under the CARE Act, there is that provision for local authorities to have an adjudication. So there are not the mechanisms to deal with this kind of issue. And therefore, the public policy objective of discouraging the failure to observe statutory duties is important and should be taken into account when your lordships and your ladyships decide how these responsibilities are to be discharged and when they are discharged. Because it's Manchester's case, that Derby's section twenty responsibility has not been discharged. And that they're potentially unorth, rather, may not have, will not have been discharged if this claim is successful.
Possibly straying rather outside the scope of this appeal. This appeal is about whether interim relief should have been granted to this claimant.
Yes, absolutely. But, but the, the purpose of these authorities is to, well, to determine all these cases, is to, is to determine who holds the statutory duty, for how long that statutory duty applies and when it can be completed or discharged. And the purpose of interim relief is to hold the status quo ante. And the status quo ante in this case, in my submission, is that Derby was responsible for this young person's care if, if he was a child. That decision is before the upper tribunal. The judge below has found, either has found there's a serious prime case case, or there's a serious issue to be tried and granted in interim relief, but on the basis that she must hold the fort pending a determination of the upper tribunal, which will decide definitively in law whether or not UIR is a child. And so it's that, it's that interim remedy and the purpose of the interim remedy, which means- which means that your lordships and your ladyship must look, I submit, in respect to what is the, what, what would be the case if what UIR is a child? Because it's, it's on that basis that interim relief is given, to hold the status quo ante. And if he was a child, that responsibility for him would not cease when he was moved to Manchester, either by Derby or, as in this case, by the Home Office. And as in HA, and I'll now turn, if I may, to HA. Because there are some striking similarities in that case.
Where's that?
So HA is, is again, it's at page one hundred and seven in the, sorry, one hundred, it's one hundred and three in the paper version, but it's got to one hundred and, unfortunately, they, they don't tally, which is unfortunate. Oh, yes, one hundred and five, just two. Thank you, my lord. So HA is another case where the young person was placed in foster care. And you see that in paragraph one. Hillingdon completed a more detailed age assessment, found he was over eighteen, paragraph two. And then he was placed by the UK Border Agency in hostel accommodation in Birmingham.
Yes.
He, there was, this is a case about interim relief. Paragraph four, six lines down. Both sides, well, five lines down, both sides were agreed that the age issue was appropriate for trial in the upper tribunal, but interim relief was a more complicated question. And then.
And what was the interim relief that was being sought?
Against, again, Hillingdon. And what's, what was found by Mr Justice Bean, as he then was, I direct paragraph five, I direct the interim relief issue should be considered. At the resumed hearing, I heard submissions. At the end of the hearing, I announced that I would refuse Hillingdon's application, that Birmingham should be joined and substituted as defendant, that I would transfer the claim to the upper tribunal and that I would grant interim relief against Hillingdon alone. So that again, and the basis for that was that is, is set out in more detail from paragraph fourteen at page one oh six of the paper, bundle one oh eight of the PDF. And Mr Justice Bean held as follows. In my view, Parliament cannot have intended a simple geographical test to be applied. Would mean that an applicant dissatisfied with his age assessment by the original authority or with the standard section twenty accommodation support could simply travel to another authority and demand to be reassessed or provided with better accommodation. It would also encouraging dumping of applicants by one authority or another. In Lady Justice, Lady Hale's phrase, passing them from pillar to post. And then his lordship went on to consider authorities, not on age assessment, but more widely. He went back at paragraph sixteen to Mr Beeson QC, as he then was, as judgment in Stuart and Wandsworth, a homelessness case where there was a simple geographical case test, but two local authorities, Lambeth and Wandsworth, held concurrent duties. Concurrent because one, because a child went to school in one area and lived in another. He then considers Liverpool and Hillingdon, we've obviously discussed that in detail, and summarises its findings, paragraphs eighteen and nineteen. And he dismissed Mr Cowan for Birmingham's submission at paragraph twenty, that, that Liverpool and Hillingdon has been overtaken by A and Croydon, the Supreme Court. But the case in which it was held that the question of age was precedent fact. And then to paragraph twenty-one, Liverpool and Hillingdon in, in, in submissions that met with approval, which you can see in paragraph twenty-two, it's the approval. It shows, they say, that a local authority cannot discharge a section twenty duty by relying on their own unlawful act. In that case, the dumping of the applicant by Hillingdon outside that area. In the present case, if the claimant is found to be a child, the refusal of services to him by Hillingdon. So it's not limited, the unlawful act duty or prescription, if one prescription, perhaps proscription, perhaps one could put it. It's not limited to acts of clear unlawfulness or bad faith. It's any case where a local authority actually has a duty determined as a matter of precedent fact, ultimately in challenge by the upper tribunal. In any of those cases, the section twenty duty continues.
But why doesn't in this case then continue on Bedford?
Well.
The claimant was in Bedford for four days in accommodation.
Perhaps because there was later, Manchester was happy to accept. It's, sorry, Derby was happy to accept its responsibility and to assert it.
If Derby had done nothing and the claimant has simply been, been moved after, what is it, twenty days? Twenty days in Derby, then there'd be no complaint against Derby?
Well, we'll, we'll come to the third case, which is HJ in due course, where the deputy judge in that case made a finding about non-case law compliant assessments, which mirrored the guidance and maybe, and I submit, was at fault, that finding. For, for a number of reasons I'll get to, but.
So is it the fact that Derby conducted an assessment, is that what?
Well, they, they conducted.
Creates the section twenty duty. Because the section twenty duty arises from the presence within the local authority area of a child.
But it, but it doesn't terminate necessarily when that.
I understand that, but that's why I was asking why Derby rather than Bedford? On your argument, what is it that makes it Derby rather than Bedford?
Because the claimant chose to challenge the assessment by Dolby. And in doing so, the claimant challenged law in law, that whenever there's an age assessment, challenge it, challenge. It, it isn't the, the decision of the age assessment that's being challenged. It is the failure to provide services to the child. And that is as a result of an age assessment that some, that concludes that a person, young person is an adult. As a result of that, there are two public law decisions. One public law decision, which is a matter of precedent fact, A is a child. Second public law decision, as a result, A is an adult. Second public law decision, in consequences of A being an adult, A is not, we, we have no responsibility to A. That was challenged by the claimant. And the claimant's position, which was upheld as having a real prospect of success, is that Derby owed a section twenty-one, a section twenty duty and a continuing section twenty duty. And that's why they challenged it and that's why they continue, the claimant, sorry, continues to challenge Derby rather than Bedford.
So Bedford duty did come to an end because it reached a decision that it was an adult, which was not challenged? Is that, is that, is this a simple affair?
Yes, and, 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 and what, one, one might go back, my lord, to Lady Hale's. In fact, in my skeleton argument, I'd rather go to the authorities' wealth. First I can go to my skeleton arguments and then we'll see where it is. It's actually paragraph thirty-three, in my skeleton argument, it's two, seven, two forty-seven, but in the authorities' bundle, it is.
A paragraph, which paragraph skeleton?
Paragraph, sorry, paragraph thirteen. But in the authorities' bundle, if your lordships want to turn, turn to that, it's at page forty-nine of the paper bundle, forty fifty-one of the PDF.
So what are we looking at?
Paragraph thirty-three of Lady Hale's judgment in A.
Which is what page?
Which is forty-nine of the authorities' bundle. I, I don't have numbered tabs, unfortunately. I'm not sure which number of the tabs is, but. It's page, yeah, forty-nine. And seven lines down, the first sentence on that line. Clearly, marginal reference H, clearly, as those cases also illustrate, the public authority, whether the Children's Services Authority or the UK Border Agency, has to make its own determination in the first instance, but it is only if this remains disputed that the court may have to intervene. Better the quality of decision making, the less likely it is that the court will come to a different decision. And then as Lord Hope put it at paragraph fifty-four, which is at page fifty.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, thank you very much. Yes, marginal reference E. As for the practical consequences, the process begins with carrying out an assessment of a person's age by the social worker. Resort to the court will only be necessary in the event of a challenge to that assessment. So I do not accept that our conclusion will result inevitably in an appropriate judicialisation of the process. Some of us practising in this area is that Lord Hope's, might say that Lord Hope's fond thoughts were perhaps misplaced on that. But in any event, I submit that the general principle that a public law decision remains until, unless and until it is challenged and/or the courts, and the courts actually decide that it is wrongly decided, is correct. Notwithstanding that this is a decision of precedent fact and notwithstanding, as Mr Justice Beetson said in MWA, that the courts cannot give themselves a jurisdiction they do not have. And that's because, as Lady Hale said, it is, it is for the claimant, as in any case, the challenge. The claimant didn't challenge Bedford. Derby, as it happens, criticises the claimant for that. And in its summary grounds of resistance, said that the challenge should have been made against Bedford. However, the permission decision, which admittedly is not appealable, because of course, once permission's given, the appeal lies against the final decision. The permission decision was not, did not agree with that because it agreed that there was a real prospect of Derby being held having had section twenty duties, which continued at the date of Miss Ridge's cake, Ridge's, the deputy judge's decision. And so that's important because that does answer my lord's question, which is why not against Bedford? And the answer is because Bedford wasn't challenged and because the deputy judge found there was a real prospect of Derby being found at fault unlawfully to have refused to treat the claimant as a child, which is the public law decision, that is the apex that has to be determined, that will be determined by the question of precedent fact being determined by the upper tribunal.
So the ultimate outcome of the judicial review might be that Derby succeeded, they maintain it and say it's not her responsibility, it's Bedford. Or both, I suppose, both Bedford and Derby might be found to be responsible. Both of them have continuing duties. But, go on.
Well, I was.
You've got enough to mop up there.
Oh, you're right. At least your computer's protected.
It's been worked, the computer's protected.
The court books, as though they might.
I'm sorry about the court books, which I borrowed as a lectern. Yes, the, the decision by the upper tribunal will be solely that decision of precedent fact. But the fact that the upper tribunal have to make that decision is predicated on the fact that when permission was granted, Derby were held.
Derby not.
Exactly. And, and, and also that it must be the case that during the judicial review process within which we are now, that Derby holds a continuing duty. Because otherwise, why would the judicial review continue? And I accept, of course, that it's in the claimant's gift as to whether to abandon the judicial review, not the parent's case, of course. But, but it wasn't argued, or at least if it was argued, this was academic before the deputy judge and permission should be refused on that basis. Perhaps that would have been my better point, so perhaps I'll change my point to that on reflection. What, what, what Derby could have argued, maybe they did, was that permission should be refused because the claim was academic at that point because Manchester had accepted authority. Either they didn't or the deputy judge was against them on that.
Now, what we're dealing with is ground two, and that is challenging the decision to grant the interim relief. Yes?
Well, both, both grounds address the decision to.
I appreciate that, but we're dealing with, you're dealing with a ground two.
Yes, but, but, but it's because the challenge that was found to have a real prospect of success is against Derby's failure to comply with their duty, that interim relief must follow against Derby. Because it follows from the deputy judge's granting permission that she found that there was a real prospect of UIR challenge to the refusal of, of, of the treatment of section twenty, of section twenty duty under the Children's Act, which is the public law decision in question, not directly and only indirectly, the decision on age. She must have found that that was an arguable case, a claim with a real prospect of success. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry to Mr Horrigan. The court has noted already, permission hasn't been determined yet in this case.
Cool.
So I didn't want Mr Horrigan to make a step. All that's been found is that there's a serious issue to be tried. Then we looked at it again and she said, yes, strong prima facie.
Mr Justice Fordham.
We haven't got any summary grounds of defence in the bundle yet. Have they, have they been filed?
Yes, they have, and they've been amended. I think it is in the bundle, but that decision hasn't been determined.
Okay, so, so what I would say is that Mr Justice Fordham's judgment, it, it, that it's been criticised heavily by my lord Fred, is that serious issue to be tried and real prospect of success or ad item. That doesn't mean that every claim against an age assessment will succeed because there's still a balance of convenience, but that's his judgment. If, if he was wrong on that and your lordships find that a serious issue to be tried, it is, sorry, that a strong prima facie case is the test, then that's a higher test than the permission test on permission, which is simply real prospect of success. And on that basis, given that interim relief has been granted, it must have been granted on the basis that the High Court judge has found that there is a real prospect of the claimant establishing a breach of Derby's duty at the time of the claim and at the time she granted interim relief. And your ladyship and your lordships are making a decision about the lawfulness of that decision by the deputy judge.
And was, and I'm still struggling with the, the, the point that because the claimant was in fact being accommodated and because there would need to be a, a, a number of facts before that or a number of events, certainly one, an age assessment, prior to becoming insecure, why it was appropriate to grant the interim injunction in the terms in which the judge did?
For, for the same reason, I submit, that Mr Justice Bean granted interim relief against against Hillingdon in, in circumstances where the Home Office had moved that young person and, and that young person was being accommodated, albeit in adult accommodation, I accept.
Well, that's a vital difference, isn't it?
Well, it, it is a difference. But nevertheless, it, 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 it is a case where the court has decided that the ongoing section twenty duty of one authority means that although the young person's in accommodation, albeit adult accommodation, he must, that accommodation must be secured or his accommodation as a child must be secured by.
Well, it's the accommodation as a child that's the crucial.
Yeah, I accept that, I accept that it's, there's no case on all fours with this case. In the bundle, I accept that. But that doesn't mean that the principles aren't relevant and important in determining your decision. And the key, the key point is the fact that the deputy judge has found that there is an arguable breach of the section twenty duty. And therefore, it must have found and did that there's an arguable case that Derby remains the authority with responsibility. And that's why one goes back to Lady Hale's judgment in A, to the Court of Appeals judgment, I think it was, in St Helens and Manchester, I think it is, possibly Liverpool. No, I think it's St Helens and Manchester. And Mr Justice Bean's judgment in HA. The public policy reason for ensuring that local authorities are held to their section twenty duty, they are enforced. And that where a challenge is made to a decision by a local authority not to discharge that authority, that, that duty and where that duty is on that basis arguably continually. basis arguably continually engaged, that interim relief must lie against that local authority, not the local authority that happens to be providing care.
Well, that's, I mean, the interim relief is only sought against Derby, so if it's going to be granted, it would be granted against Derby. But if one looks at the judgment, the judge is concerned, well, it's between twenty-two and twenty-seven, the judge.
Sorry, I haven't yet got to it. It's somewhere in the bundle, which I'm.
I don't think you need, the judge's concern or concerns are the consequences for the claimant of not being treated as a child.
Yeah.
And the point I'm trying to understand is, it doesn't look as there was any risk of the claimant not being treated as a child by Manchester. So it comes down to funding in the interim.
Well, it always, one could say it always comes down to funding, because the point of view of a local authority, they obviously have an earnest.
But is funding a balance of convenience element in this case?
But it isn't, in my submission, solely about funding, because your lordship must also consider, in my submission, the public policy reasons that Lady Hale, Mr Justice Bean, who they were, and other judges have said rightly, that unlawful acts, including the failure to grant, to treat children as children, must not be given favour in these circumstances, because the reality is, if they were, then there would be an incentive on local authorities. And I'm not saying that this is the case in Derby's case, it wasn't responsible for the move, but there would be an incentive on them to discharge, to attempt to discharge that responsibility by moving them. So there is within the, within what is a discretionary decision by the High Court. And obviously, when your lordship and your ladyship come to decide whether that discretionary decision was outside the wide ambit of discretion that lay in the High Court, part of that discretion, in my submission, is to uphold those public policy principles and on that basis to enforce that section twenty obligation. And were the deputy judge to have made no order, simply because Manchester had to, as it were, prevent this claimant from falling through the gaps on being told by the NHS that he looked like a child, that would be a, that was well within the wide ambit of her discretion, because it took into account both the arguable failure of Derby and, in addition, the public policy objectives held to be important at the highest level by Lady Hale in the A case and by this court and the High Court in subsequent cases and probably previous ones.
Can I wind forward to the end of the process? Upper tribunal reaches a decision, because interim relief is intended to protect the ring or hold the ring pending that final decision. Assume the final decision is that the claimant here is a child, the consequence being that Derby's decision was an unlawful decision. Assuming you're right, that Derby retains, therefore, the obligation on the section twenty, it didn't disappear when the child left its geographical area. At that point, the child will have been in foster care within Manchester for a long time, longer than now. It's not realistic even then, is it, that the child would be moved? So at that point, the sort of order that the parties would be asked in the court to make would be to continue the arrangement now by requiring Derby to secure, in your language, but the child still to be accommodated in fact in Manchester. At that point, it's about money.
If I may answer that by looking at it through the prism of what these court, what this court and what the upper tribunal is doing. This, the High Court has given permission for a judicial review against the failure or apparent or possible failure of Derby to discharge.
I thought the High Court hadn't given permission.
Oh, sorry, hasn't given permission, has given interim belief on applying either the same test or a higher test. And so therefore, one must assume, has assumed, real prospect of success at least, if not serious, strong prima facie case. And then the upper tribunal will decide as matter of precedent fact whether or not this child is, was a child at the date on which those duties might have applied. If it makes that decision, then it makes a decision on the basis of the time that the judicial review was brought, those duties were given, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that section twenty duty will continue onwards. If I may, this was envisaged by Mr Justice Bean at paragraph twenty-two of his judgment at page one hundred and eight of the authorities' bundle, if I may quote from that, in, I think it's in entirety, if I may. So he said, "I accept the submissions of the claimant and Birmingham Council at any rate for the purpose of the present claim. This judicial review challenge is to Hillingdon's termination of services following their age assessment, which is argued to be unlawful. I am not ordering Hillingdon to provide suitable accommodation and support to HA on a permanent basis, but only until the upper tribunal determines his age. If the tribunal finds that he was an adult in June 2011, Hillingdon will have discharged their section twenty duty and no such duty will fall on Birmingham either. If they find that he was, say, fourteen years old and fifteen at the time of their determination, an issue will arise as to whether Hillingdon's section twenty duty to him will continue up to and in some respects beyond his eighteenth birthday. It may be, assuming that he remains physically present in Birmingham, that Hillingdon and Birmingham will then owe him concurrent duties." In the Crown A against Leicester City Council and Hillingdon, a case in which the claimant's child had moved from one authority area to another, there was, and there was no dispute about her age, is only Judge Farmer QC held that no concurrent duties, that concurrent duties were owed. And I add, there are other cases that suggested this too. Oxfordshire BG, I think, at Oxfordshire is one of them. But that is not a full decision now, nor in this claim. No one argued that I should grant interim relief against both councils, it would be cumbersome and disproportionate for a relatively short period. That, in my submission, is a full answer to your lordship's question.
I'm sorry, but I haven't understood it, then, it's my fault. I'm simply trying, the point was this, that what's the reality of the relief that would be granted, assuming that the claimant succeeds in establishing they are a child, in circumstances where they've been in foster care in Manchester for the entirety of the intervening period? Won't the parties at that stage be looking at the best interest of the child, be saying, well, they should stay in foster care where they are already? But it's now established that Derby had the responsibility throughout, it was there, that they ought to, ultimately, they should be paying for it. And that's how the order you're currently saying we should construe as doing that, namely securing that Derby pay but live in Manchester, that's what the parties would be seeking to put in place at that stage.
Well, let's, unfortunately, the report of HA doesn't include the order. It might be that after this, we might, my colleague is one of the counsel in that case, I might be able to find the order that was granted by Mr Justice Bean, if that helps. But I would suggest that, given, well, I accept also that this wasn't a case where this young person was in, accommodated as a child elsewhere, so it is a difference, perhaps that wouldn't assist. But nevertheless, that's a case where a young person would have been moved from his adult accommodation, but not necessarily out of Birmingham, to accommodation that would have been secured also by Hillingdon, because the order would not have been, this must be in the geographical area of Hillingdon, it was, it would be as the deputy judge in this case ordered, that it would be secured by Hillingdon. And yes, that means paid for, but that has got, but that is a public policy reason also that Mr Justice Bean, Lady Hale, et cetera, as I've said a number of times, have taken into account in determining whether to exercise their wide ambit of discretion to grant interim relief, and it's an appropriate consideration in my submission. And yes, money does come into it, but that's absolutely right.
I'm not, I'm not being critical of money comes into it, I'm simply asking what's the likely outcome?
That's why I started.
Might lead into what the likely interim remedy is.
That's why I started with the criticism, I'm afraid it was a criticism, of judges who have in the past said, it doesn't matter, it's all the same pot, it's not the same pot.
I'm not sure he's said that recently.
No, but that has been said.
I don't think judges think that.
That has been said. I can find it in due course if I wish, I'm sure.
No, I don't think that's.
Achieve any objective, but it has been said.
The moment the claimant is in foster care.
Yes.
And I don't know how long the case, assuming permission is granted, how long it would take to decide.
Probably at least a year.
But let's assume that he continues to be in the same, so my lord's question is, looking at it objectively, the likelihood is that after, if that determination is that he is a child, that he'll stay where he is?
Yes, and it may be that, as Mr Justice Bean said, and that's Mr Justice Bean's point, it doesn't, in my submission.
Why is it necessary to have interim relief if that's the position it's going to continue to be anyway?
Because there was a serious issue to be tried, at least if not a strong prima facie case, that there was an ongoing section twenty duty at the time at which this order was made and continuing until the assessment is done, that Derby held that duty, that Derby acted unlawfully not continuing it if he was a child, and that on that basis, interim relief should lie against Derby, even if the young person is accommodated happily potentially.
Can I put it alternatively, if the determination is that he's an adult?
Yes.
Then Derby would not have failed to comply with its obligations. And in those circumstances, the financial consequences of accommodating the claimant would fall on Manchester, because Manchester would not have any remedy against Derby.
Or against the claimant, because there's no cross undertaking damage.
Or against the claimant.
And that's what distinguishes this, these public law cases from other cases, which may be why a higher test is applied, I'm not going to.
But if interim relief is granted, then the financial loss will fall on Derby.
Yes, but that's one of the consequences of the court making a decision about interim relief, especially when not fortified by cross undertaking.
But again, coming back to my lord's question, is that actually the only likely impact of the refusal or grant of relief? Is that in the event of a determination that the claimant is an adult, the loss will fall on one or other of the local authorities concerned, depending on whether interim relief is or isn't granted?
I think I have to concede that that's right, but as the court has said, and I can think of Emin Croydon in relation to costs before, there are cases that are about money, but they nevertheless fall for judicial discrimination.
I'm just looking at the, what the result would be of granting, not granting, looking at the balance of convenience, for the purposes of looking at the balance of convenience.
The balance of convenience in this case should, in my submission, take into account those public policy factors and the fact that it follows from the serious issue to be tried determination, that there is a serious issue to be tried, that Derby is in continuing breach of its section twenty duties and should be held to them and should be responsible to them for them financially. And if there is any loss, because there's no fortification by cross undertaking, as is the case in many public law decisions, if there is that consequence, that should fall on Derby, not on Manchester, because it's a pure accident that Manchester provided the, and the other public policy.
It's as much of an accident that he was in Derby, having been moved from Bedford.
But then Derby assumed its responsibilities, undertook the assessment and came, if the upper tribunal finds in this way to the wrong result. But the other, the other public policy factor is the importance of the geographical test applying so that no child falls through the gaps, which is why that judicial, why that public policy decision was made by Parliament in applying the geographical test that shouldn't. And this is part of the general public policy findings of their lordships in the Supreme Court and this court and the High Court, that should not lead to an incentive to a local authority not to do what Manchester did responsibly. In other words, if Manchester had behaved like Hillingdon did in those two cases, it would be in a better position than if it behaved responsibly by giving this young person the care that the NHS workers determined that he, to which he was entitled, without assessing his age.
Can I ask you this, you've mentioned public policy quite a few times now. You've also mentioned Lord Hope's optimism that we weren't going to be flooded, or the Admin Court wasn't going to be flooded with these sorts of claims. Is there not some public policy interest in discouraging claims where a child is or a putative child is properly accommodated as a child?
But this claim happened before this young person was accommodated, so it's only the ex post facto fact of, or the fact that happened afterwards, the move of the young person.
So on that basis, the balance would tip if, despite the fact that they'd already moved, they'd made the claim in Derby.
It might do, and that might be a reason why the balance would tip against the claim against Bedford, for example.
Now, we've asked you an awful lot of questions, haven't I, on the time?
Well, I was going to go to HJ, and the only point I wish to make about HJ, I've made in my discussion.
Where is HJ in writing?
HJ, sorry, yes, of course, it is at page two hundred and ninety, or two hundred, or three hundred, I think, no, two hundred and ninety-six in the paper version. No, no, it's not, I'm so sorry, this is the case where I put it, it's two hundred and twenty-four, but unfortunately, it's missing some pages, and so.
Oh, okay, yes.
My lord's mighty, we provided some copies of that, our apologies, that happened. I think it's literally two pages. But I'm going to refer to paragraph numbers rather than pages because I've got it separately. I probably should, as I've cited, I probably should just go through the facts very briefly, I apologize that I'm over the time that I expected to take. There was an initial assessment by Greenwich, paragraph three. The judgment was about Croydon's failure to assess, paragraph nine. The judge, the deputy judge in that case, paragraph fifteen, said what appears to follow next is that HJ came to contact with the Refugee Council with their assistance referred to the Refugee Council defendant, i.e. Croydon. Defendant refused to assess, not clear whether HJ's presence in Croydon was the result of an instruction in her grant of immigration bail to attend at Luna House, which is in Croydon, combined with her desire to avoid returning to the address where she'd been found in Greenwich, or the result of solicitor's advice. And then at paragraph seventeen, three lines down, the defendant maintained that the claimant should present to RBG according to the terms of the PAN, I'm not quite sure what RBG, oh, Rob, or of Greenwich, sorry, the Pan London Protocol. And then the defendant's summary grounds, paragraph nineteen, sorry, disclosed, defendant became aware of an age assessment by RPG on the twenty-seventh of January, obtaining a copy from Greenwich, who called it a preliminary assessment. It follows that when refusing to assess HJ as a child in need on the seventeenth, twentieth and twenty-first of January, defendant was not aware that there had been a preliminary assessment. And the judge goes on to find, at paragraph twenty-seven, four lines from the bottom of that paragraph, "Local Children's Services are to apply this act, the act, and may not, the Children's Act, that is, may not arrange for a child to be accommodated under homelessness provision. That supports an approach whereby local Children's Services may not pass on their responsibility to some other authority."
Yes.
And then, and then it goes on to consider Mr Justice Bean's judgment in HA. And the top of the page, after the paragraph twenty-nine, top of the following page, defendant relied on being, Mr Justice Bean's judgment, when he observed that Parliament can also contend with a simple geographical test. He says, and then paragraph thirty, HA would be directly in point had the interim relief in this case been granted against Greenwich, which then wanted to terminate its services. But that is not how this case comes before me. I am concerned with the refusal of the defendant to assess HJ at a time when they and HJ were unaware that RBG had carried out a preliminary assessment of HJ's age. So it's a different case because it's not concerned with the grant of interim relief, it's concerned with that failure to assess. And moreover, there are other parts of this judgment that might. And moreover, there are other parts of this judgment that might be relevant. Paragraph 39, there is no indication in the statute of lack of cooperation and the absence of mechanism for reimbursement, which, which addresses my lady, Lady Justice Yip's question to me. So there isn't that mechanism, and I doubt frankly whether or not the Surrey and Croydon authority about unjust enrichment would apply in this, in these cases. But anyway, absolves a local authority from its obligation to assess a child physically in its area. And then paragraph 40, he sees the undesirability of a young person moving into area two seeking an assessment of his or her age because he has received an adverse determination. But then finds that the act's designed to provide protection for a vulnerable class of persons, namely children, paragraph 41. And paragraph 42, there is not therefore a straightforward alternative remedy case where a claimant seeks judicial review of the decision of authority X or a statutory appeal procedure is available for decisions of this kind. It is not, it was not suggested that there is any statutory appeal procedure against the decisions of local children's services not to carry out a child in need assessment. Rather, the argument is that Greenwich assessed HB to, HJ to be an adult, and until such time as HJ successfully appeals that decision, no duty under the Children Act rises from the defendant. Now, it's that that I submit might be the wrong decision. And that that I address in my skeleton argument from paragraphs 26 to paragraph 28. And I make the point, but it's not, but this submission isn't dependent, your lordship's judgment is not in my submission, dependent upon these submissions. But I suggest that that was wrongly decided, that case, because of the three reasons set out. I suggest it was a, perhaps it was a little, went a little bit far in the word I used, paragraph 26, but certainly a wrong suggestion, a binary distinction between an age assessment that was case law compliant, one that wasn't. Decisions of the local authorities may always be wrong, but there is no binary distinction between the two. HAM confirmed that, and that's always been the case since Merton. What, what actually Merton is, is an extension of the Tameside duty of reasonable inquiry. And Mr Justice Swift very clearly set that out in that judgment. And therefore, to put it to one side, case law compliant and non-case law compliant or Merton compliant, non-Merton compliant is wrong in my submission. Secondly, it's inconsistent with the clear finding of Lady Hale in the Supreme Court, that when a, an LA does assess age, the conclusion of that assessment remains a lawful finding of fact unless and until challenged and overturned. And again, this is different to the, to this case, because in that case, the Bedford decision had been overtaken by Derby's assessment, and it was Derby's assessment that was challenged, and that's why that is arguably at fault. But unless and until it's challenged, it stands. And I, I make the submissions in paragraph 28, that I invite your lordships and your ladyship to adopt, which is that it isn't an unreasonable burden on a young person to expect a challenge to the first assessment, because he's expected to challenge a public law decision and to do so in a timely manner. B, should he have evidence that that first assessment was wrongly decided? He can rely on that evidence in his JR without being bound by the usual rules about the admissibility of evidence, because...
I think given the time, we, we can see what you say in paragraph...
See what I say.
Yeah.
I think that's really all I have to say about that case. But I do submit, in addition, that that is not on all fours with this case, because it's a challenge to a failure to assess rather than interim relief.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, most grateful to you.
I'll, I'll be very brief on ground two then, because my learned friend has addressed you.
Yes.
Indeed so. I can say I don't disagree with any of his principled arguments relating to HA and the monetary aspect. There, there is, if I may, a, a simpler way to get to the same conclusion though, in my submission, that the claim is not academic. The point is, I think, set out in summary at paragraph 45 of my skeleton, that it is effectively this, we of course have to be dealing with the facts that were before the judge when she was making her decision. And it's only if her determination based upon those facts are irrational, that her decision on interim relief should be overturned. Now, the relevant part of her judgment in my submission is at paragraph 27 and 30 to this point. If I ask the court very briefly to turn to that.
Yes.
And so it's 27, and it's actually over the page from 27. The court see, it is however apparent that MCC are looking to the defendant to potentially assume the care of the claimant or come to some agreement, having regard to the advice within the joint working advice. And then moving on to 30, at the very end of the judgment, onto the, onto the page after 30 starts, at the bottom of the paragraph, there is no guarantee that MCC will continue to accommodate the claimant as a child. They are now on notice as to the dispute regarding his age. On balance and following the rationale in the joint working guidance regarding duplication of work by authorities, I am persuaded that it is appropriate to make the order on interim relief against the defendant as the maker of the impugn decision. So, my lords, my lady, I say that is the important part, whether, why the judge says this is not an academic case. I say that is a, not an irrational decision based upon the facts that were before her. And the reason I say that is at 45B of my skeleton, and that is, in terms of her understanding what Manchester were doing, the only information she had before her was a, well, I should say, a 12th of May email, which is effectively a acknowledgement of receipt, and a 14th of May email. Now, that is in the supplementary bundle, and that is at 71. My lord, my lady, you've already seen that email.
Yes.
I would invite, for the sake of time, a review of that email, but it is clear in my submission that from that email, the only information the judge had before her was a confirmation that MCC's position was that it was accommodating, but only in circumstances where the ADCS joint working guidance and the ADCS age assessment guidance was being referred to, and that there'd be no agreement between Derby and Manchester about accommodation at that point.
So what it might be said she missed there was the fact that Manchester could not unilaterally decide to cease providing the care.
Well, that is, that is not clear, is the problem, I, I say, I say, my lord.
What's not clear?
Whether they could cease to provide care.
How could they? They had an obligation on the section 20, didn't they?
Well, they, it appears that he may have, they may have, way well have accepted section 20, but we don't, we don't know that that is the case of the problem.
Well, what she knew is what we know, is this local authority's social workers decided to, to accept her as a, him as a child and therefore move him to foster care. That's what we know.
In the absence of course, of any knowledge of any previous age assessments.
Why does that matter? Their, their decision was, this is a child we'll, we'll care for.
My, my lord, I, I, I do understand the point. What I say is, you can look at this email and you can see that in there, Manchester have not made it clear that they are going to continue to accommodate. And in that perspective, the judge was entitled to say, well, this isn't an academic case, this is a putative child that needs protection, and so it is within my discretion to say that interim relief should be granted.
You've probably stressed out in your skeleton argument, but where do you get the test that the decision has to have been irrational?
Oh, that is, it's the Offsted case, my lady, if it assists, it is in my skeleton. Just find it. It is, it is in within the bundle as well, I'm just trying to... Paragraph 13, my lady, it is R and governing body of X, Office of Education.
Paragraph 13 of the judgment or paragraph 30?
Paragraph 80 of the judgment, paragraph 13.
13 of your skeleton, thank you.
Thank you.
So in terms of the, the facts, I say, my lord, that there, there is...
Yeah, so the test irrational or otherwise plainly incorrect in law.
Correct, yes, yes. So that's the standard. You'll also see that the deputy judge refers to the joint working guidance, the court hasn't been taken to that yet. It is important, because the judge took it into account when determining the balance of convenience of whether, having viewed that email, it would be appropriate to grant interim relief. Now, could I allow me a moment, my lord? I'll go through this very quickly. It's in, the joint working guidance is in the core, sorry, it's in the supplementary bundle at tab nine, and starting at page two.
Yes.
My lord, I just simply, that starts with the introduction and purpose, so that just note to paragraph one, the guidance is to be effectively guidance for the Home Office and local authorities. The important part of the guidance that may assist the court, which is assisted, my lady, below, is paragraph six, and that is page 11. My lords, my lady, you'll see at the top there, the, the impetus that is put, agencies must communicate disputes and decisions at the earliest possible opportunity. Delay in notifying changes of status can be extremely prejudiced with the welfare of the individual and could lead to incorrect decisions, removals and/or loss of support. So, and then down to 6.2, which is on page 13 of tab nine. This is, and this is the steps to be taken then with conflicting LA age assessments. LA responsibility is tied to geographical boundaries, so it's possible for an age assessment to be sought from more than one LA. For example, where asylum seeker moves to accommodation that was in a different LA boundary, in some cases the assessments may not be in agreement, and my submission would be, well, actually that's what you do have here. If Manchester are saying...
I know, but what it just says is, if you look at conflicting local authority age assessments, if the Home Office becomes aware of conflicting age assessments, it must notify the local authorities concerned for them to agree which should take responsibility.
Yes, well, it's, it's that part in bold is particularly important, my lord. LAs must work together with other agencies and be sure to prioritise safeguarding the individual to adhere to the children act 1989. That is what I say Manchester has done. It has taken the putative child into its care, and now is, on, on the basis that it is safeguarding the individual, this is certainly our understanding, and now it is attempting to understand which of the authorities is due to be accommodated. But that is, of course, was not known at the time. And then we've got below that, existing lawful age assessment, when an LA approaches an age, appears one required, should check with the Home Office. That may go to your, the Bedford point, because really there was an incumbency upon all the local authorities to check and see if there were previous age assessments, and they, and they did not, it would seem in this case.
This is your distinction between the functions Manchester was performing?
Yes, my lord. And perhaps for the time, I won't go any further into the joint guidance. My overall submission on the joint guidance is essentially this, it's clear that the local authorities have to work together, and that no gap must appear. And based upon the information before the judge at that time, the judge considered that guidance, and rightfully, I say, came to the view that interim relief should be granted because it was unclear which authority would ultimately have responsibility. Now, that may have changed today, of course, but at the time the judge was making the decision, that was certainly where we were.
Thank you.
My lord, the very final point is just an additional authority on your point, my learned friend's point about HA, because it may assist, but I know, my lord, you were concerned about the point where the Home Office moves somebody from one place to another, and it's effectively not the local authorities doing it. If it may assist, that in the case of BNB, that is exactly what happened.
B and?
BNB is the case.
Is it in the bundle?
It is in the supplementary bundle, and if I just give the court the reference, because it is also referred to in my skeleton argument of paragraph 53, I apologize, 52, it is, in particular, the useful part of that judgment, paragraph, starting at paragraph 19 through to 23, it's page 181.
19 to, 19 to 23.
19 to 23, and it's page 181 in the supplementary authorities. And my lord, the, the court will see from that, I hope, that that is the adoption of the HA test my learned friend referred to, i.e. there is an impugn decision, it has now been challenged, and despite the fact that has been a move, because the, that could be an incorrect, I mean unlawful decision, the responsibility is retained by the original assessing, the impugn decision authority. So, her onerous Karen Walton Smith in BNB adopted that approach and adopted it in circumstances where the Home Office moved, and that was, to my lord's point, that is also made out in MWM. If that is an unlawful decision, then it will absolve itself of a responsibility, which it did have. I take that at a pace, because I'm aware of the time.
Yes.
But I wonder if I can assist the court any further.
No, thank you very much. Yes, Mr Mag.
Yes, the test to interfere with the decision below is, did, did the deputy judge in principle, it's exactly, she, she had a discretion there, if she didn't exercise the, the usual test. Mr Gardner says, yes, look, she, she correctly entered the balance of convenience, but look at paragraph 27 and paragraph 30. Problem with that is, the local authority is not relying on the working guidance. The working guidance doesn't apply. It applies where you've got conflicting decisions. This isn't a situation where that was such a situation. There was, Manchester had accepted. It hadn't accepted it by way of emergency, it hadn't accepted it by way of a condition. So, Lady Justice Yip's question is, well, what, what should have happened when Manchester accepted? The claimant should have stopped and withdrawn the interim relief application. The claimant's lawyers are, are expert in the interface between age assessment and Children Act responsibilities, and they would have seen from the correspondence that they asked from Manchester City Council that it was unconditional in any way. So that's what should have happened. My lord, Lord Justice Moylan is completely correct that, that if Manchester City Council wanted to resile from that, they would need to go through a number of steps, including having their own age assessment. And that's why the deputy judge was wrong to say there was any fragility or any uncertainty about the accommodation in Manchester. Mr Hall was asked by the court, can you identify the, in the balance of convenience test, what sounded to satisfy an order against Derby? His answer was, well, they've been unlawful in lots of different ways. Didn't say anything about prejudice, which is relevant to the balance of convenience, because there was no prejudice here, because the claimant was being accommodated already. And just need to turn very quickly through the...
The prejudice would be to Manchester, or potentially to Derby, depending on where round it goes.
Yes, yes. And he accepted that as well, when you were talking about pounds, shilling and pence. That who pays dispute is out with of the balance of convenience between the claimant and any local authority. He's being accommodated in Manchester. If, if it transpires that Derby needs to pay that, that is no prejudice to him whatsoever. It's completely outside of, or if it's not completely outside of, it's very tangential. The court asked, well, what happened in the RR and BSI case? And the other council have said that it was just dealing with the interim relief application. And my understanding is thereafter that the judicial with, claim was actually withdrawn, so it never reached the stage of seeking, getting permission. In that case, when it came before the Court of Appeal, it was commercial practitioners arguing the point, and, and so they said at paragraph 89 of that judgment, that they couldn't find a case where a defendant had been ordered to do something in the future. Well, that's exactly the type of situation you get, where you order relief against a public authority to ongo in the future. It's, it's, it's often the situation in welfare cases. So they may not have been able to find it, but it, it, it happens. But that case did specify that it was a threshold at paragraph 112 and elsewhere, and so it's implicit in that, that if it's a threshold, you have to find strong prima facie as, as part of the process before granting interim relief. Now... Now, Mr Gardner says, yes, that's exactly what we were doing here. We were just trying to maintain the status quo. And so don't worry too much about whether it's mandatory or not mandatory, but it wasn't the status quo. Derby City Council never accommodated and never intended to accommodate. So it was the requirement to put specific steps on Derby. He then said, well, what you can do is, because the permission test is lower for age assessment cases, and in fact, it's a fact finding process, that you don't need to apply defalco. It's completely correct that a lower threshold test is for permission is applied, which is, unless it would not properly succeed, the claimant's case at trial, permission should be granted. It matters not that it's a fact finding forum rather than administrative court. It still, we would submit, requires the court to consider the strength of the claimant's case and decide that it's strong before ordering interim relief. Then the court asked, what does the public law challenges add to the dispute of fact about whether the person is an adult or a child? They feed in in this way, they're still very much live, and it's completely correct that they are hived off to the upper tribunal as well. The reason they are live is because of this, as was recognised by the House of Lords in A and Croydon, that the local authority assessors are expert in determining age. If they have made a procedural error or done some other public law misstep in that assessment, it goes to the weight of their age assessment, which is very pertinent in the final tribunal, because the final tribunal needs to decide what shape, weight should we place on the local authority's decision? And are we justified in departing from it? So if there's public law errors in it, that gives them an opportunity to place less weight on it. So they're very much live within that process. It was very interesting to talk about the European jurisprudence and conventions about interpretation, but that doesn't apply here, because there's nothing that is uncertain about the particular legislation. Here, there is no problem that requires that input. Then Mr Gardner talked and took the court to a case called S and Croydon, Mr Justice Lavender's decision. He was dealing with a situation before the age assessment had completed. So at that stage, you do treat the claimant as a child. A and Brent, that was referenced by Mr Hall, makes the same point, until assessed. But once you've gone past assessed, you can't presume one way or the other, because you've got a local authority deciding this person is an adult. So you can't then say you have to accommodate as a child. Were it otherwise, you'd have interim relief as of right. You don't get interim relief as of right, because it's distinguishable from the situation that Mr Justice Lavender was dealing with in S and Croydon. It all depends on the circumstances when a claimant comes to the administrative court, whether there is a status quo that includes the local authority accommodating, or whether you're asking the local authority to accommodate anew. And you were taken to H A, which is in page two hundred and twenty two, twenty one of the authorities' bundle, and at paragraphs forty six through to forty nine. And if you read those carefully, you can see there's a distinction between a situation where a local authority is already accommodating and where you're asking for fresh, new positive steps.
Thank you.
That's not the situation that you, why R was in. He was never accommodated by Derby City Council, so he was asking for something completely anew. It is correct that cases after R R have continued to apply, grant interim mandatory relief without reference to defalco, but as the court noted, that they hadn't, they hadn't been cited before them. Here is an opportunity for you to clarify that.
Thank you.
We say, we say that there's no principled reason why it should depart from the other types of social welfare cases where it applies. Then the court asked, well, what were you after in relation to this judicial review? And the answer came back, oh, well, all we wanted was for it to be determined that we were a child. Whereas in fact, the judicial review relief that is being sought goes much further than that. That is, as was called in different contexts, a gateway into being provided obligations under the Children Act.
Yes.
The relief prayed is at tab eleven forty of the main bundle, and it requires such other order as shall further the legal obligations upon the public authority.
I mean, opposite to the name there.
Yes, yes, exactly. This, this case, unlike the cases Mr Hall took you to, is not a dumping case. This case is one where there was an unconditional acceptance of that duty by Manchester. Manchester can't use this litigation as an attempt to absolve itself from that section twenty. Nor can it say, oh, well, someone in the hospital told us this person is a child. The social workers are completely independent from the hospital. They had a choice to accept as a child or to say, no, you're already being accommodated as an adult. They took the former. The court asked, well, what would be the ultimate effect of this litigation? Assuming permission is granted and assuming that it's found that Derby City Council were wrong and that the claimant is a child. Yes, it's completely right that it would be very, very unlikely to move the claimant from Manchester unless he wanted to. But it has additional utility, which is, there would be Leaving Care Act obligations, and they would bite on Derby City Council under section twenty three of the Children Act, rather than on Manchester City Council. So they act in sort of loco parentis for the claimant, once they reach the age of eighteen and beyond to arrange education, et cetera, create an educational pathway. The other dumping cases involved Hillington trying to say, because section twenty is geographic, oh, I know we've done an assessment, but he's now accommodated in Birmingham. Birmingham knew nothing about him. Birmingham didn't do any assessment. And they were trying to run an argument, saying it's geographical, so we don't have any responsibility, which was unsurprisingly unsuccessful. So it's completely distinguishable from this case. Then the court asked, could Derby have done nothing in light of the Bedford assessment? Yes, Derby had a choice, just like Manchester had a choice later on in the process. Derby had a choice. If, I don't think, I'm not sure if Derby knew about the earlier assessment, but if it did, it could just say, go back to Bedford, but it undertook its own assessment. It had a choice to do that. The claimant in the litigation has a fundamental problem with that, because he didn't challenge an age assessment. So the presumption of legality applies to that. So that's going to weigh very heavily at that, during that period. Fortunately, he doesn't need to worry about that, because Manchester at a later period has accepted that he is a child. For those reasons, it's very unlikely that this judicial review will get off the ground at any stage. Those are my responses in relation to ground two, unless the court has any specific questions.
No, we don't. Sorry to overrun. Thank you all very much for your respective submissions. We will be reserving our judgments. They will be provided to you in draft with usual embargo as to their use. So for tabographical errors only, and we would anticipate that once you have perceived them, you will be able to agree the order, but if not, to deal with any outstanding matters on paper. So thank you again.
My lord, sorry, I should have said, I've just looked at my notes of my responses. The Liverpool Hillington case was superseded by the joint working guidance about what happens when you've got different, local authorities with different disputes.
Right.
So it's been superseded.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.